I didn't think it was big enough to do it and I started messing around on maps and like.
The remote.
Right.
I got a warning for that.
Uh huh.
So.
Right.
And I changed it.
You can go to dealership and check your board.
Uh no, I'd be fifty dollars for it.
They changed it for me for nothing.
Did they? Anyway, I changed it.
So that's pretty cool.
Then it didn't.
Amazing how they bring dirt in to level that thing off.
Because I had taken the.
Oh really?
Nice again.
I got my my. Uh but you might need to look at that. Look up the manual and see where that chart sometimes it's in the console. Um it's pretty included in there and it'll recognize it and if it's there then it'll say like recognize that key. But if it's not there, it definitely. I don't know what to say. I think that's that's.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is uh six o'clock, the designated time for our meeting to start and consideration of those who might be watching on Facebook or YouTube and watching from home. And to all of you that are present, we call to order the October meeting of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners. We are officially in autumn and from some of the weather reports, it's going to start feeling a little more like it as the week goes along and uh we're glad to have each one of you here tonight as we conduct the county's business. I am told that in November, we should be back at the old courthouse uh where we have a little more room and uh we just thank all the uh patience of all of our citizens here, our board, our staff. Um as we've gone through these several months, but a lot of improvements at the courthouse that will make it a lot more accessible to to those that that do want to attend our our commissioners meeting. So with that, we thank you again for being here. I know that we all are watching on television the events in western North Carolina. We have a number of people, employees and and others from Randolph County that are involved in that process. I know I just saw Amy Rudisil, our our public information officer. I don't think she's even been home. Uh rode rode from up there today. She's been up there for several days. Jonathan Moody, who was supposed to be on our agenda from our animal control services is up there and I think Zeb, manager Zeb, might have a little more to say about that. Sheriff EMS folks, just so many Randolph County folks that are up there helping with the process. I know the young man that uh mows my yard, he's up there so helping out and doing his part. So we want to thank everyone for doing that. I'm gonna ask Mike May, who's the chaplain, and uh to come forward for our our invocation tonight. And as he comes, I think that we should have a moment of silence to and to recognize and to have our own little prayer of for those folks in the in the West. And I also would say um today is the one year anniversary of the Hamas attack in Israel. Israel is a special country to uh especially to the Christian world. And a lot of innocent men, women and children were killed in that attack. So um pray there that peace would come to that area of the world. But will you please stand and move your hands and uh we'll have a moment of silence and uh. Pastor May, you can stop when you're ready to pray.
Could you come to the microphone? Thank you.
Moment of silence?
Yes.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we take this opportunity, God, to come to you on behalf of the county commissioners. Lord, we are so thankful for them and the wisdom, God, the sacrifice of time that you've given uh to them and to us away from our families. Lord, that we ask that we not only reflect on yearly events, but Lord, what just happened a week ago. Father, we are so obviously in debt of your grace and your mercy. Lord, as we do reflect on the lives that have been changed in just a short matter of time. I thank you, God, for Sheriff Sebo and the response team and how all the workers, Lord, that have uh joined shoulder to shoulder with sister counties, God. Lord, to let others see Christ in us. And Lord, I do thank you for Randolph County. We thank you for our state, Lord of North Carolina. Lord, we pray in Christ's name for all the the generations that will follow, the heritage that we embrace, the legacy that we leave. God, we do pray for wisdom and mercy in your honor and in the name of your son, we plead the blood of Christ over this prayer in Jesus' name. And all God's people say.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Do you want to send a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please take your seats. We do have a uh special recognition this afternoon. Uh Major King, see you there. We uh are uh one of our emergency services personnel is retiring. Major King's going to do the honors.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I'm here to talk to you about Desiree Walter. Lovely lady here in the back. Desiree Walter began her career with Randolph County Emergency Services on August first, two thousand and three. She proudly served in the nine one one division for twenty one years, building a warm and charismatic persona. She is widely respected by her colleagues on both sides of the radio. Over the past twenty one years, Desiree has spoken to thousands of Randolph County citizens and visitors, providing them with prompt law enforcement, fire and EMS services. She has assisted in the delivery of two babies, one boy and one girl, and has over ten documented CPR saves. Beyond her work, Desiree is a devoted daughter, nurturing mother, and now a loving grandmother. On August twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, Desiree completed her final shift as a telecommunications. She will now enjoy her retirement as Gigi, looking after her three grandchildren. Thank you for your years of dedicated service. Congratulations on your well deserved retirement, Desi.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then this is from your party. Thank you.
We got some more.
Here, I'll hold that. Yeah.
On behalf of the board of county commissioners and citizens of Randolph County, we thank you for your service. You're there every day, the folks in that room, and we've often said lots of lives are saved. You're a good example of that by having that the nine one one system here. And so thanks for your considerations and your efforts every day to be on the job, help save lives, to deliver babies.
Thank you.
Amen.
After that, we're gonna give you a cloth.
Well, thank you. So I appreciate that very much.
This is a grateful appreciation to Desiree Walter, recognition of twenty one years of service, October seventh, two thousand and twenty four, by the Randolph County Board of Commissioners. God bless you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Ms. Walter.
Thank you.
Yes.
Get the box and go along with it.
Not there.
Thank you.
You saved the day again.
I don't need that anymore.
My last day, guys.
Very good, very good. Well done. All right, our public comment period at this time. I'm gonna ask our county attorney to uh present the rules of order for our public comment period.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The rules of procedure for the public comment period are as follows. The public comment period will be limited to fifteen minutes at the beginning of the meeting. If more time is required, it will be at the discretion of the board. Each speaker must give his or her name, both orally and in writing, before speaking. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. Comments are to be directed to the board as a whole and not to one individual commissioner. Response, discussion, or action concerning issues raised during the public input session will be at the discretion of the board. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation. Speakers should not discuss matters which concern the candidacy of any person seeking public office or matters in current or anticipated litigation.
Abkar.
Haley White.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Haley White and I'm here to speak about an ongoing trash and rat infestation in my neighborhood. The property behind my home, thirty thirty three Rainbow Loop, was purchased by Blue Mountain Trust in two thousand and twenty two. Prior to this, the home had sat vacant for years due to its dilapidated condition, cracked foundation, almost impassable driveway, and leaking septic system. The home was purchased as is, and to my knowledge, it has had not has not had any repairs done to make the home livable. In October of that year, we began finding eighteen inch from nose to tail rat carcasses in our yard. We spoke to the neighbors in our community who were also experiencing the same thing. At this time, the trash in the yard was visible from the road and stacked higher than a vehicle. So I reached out to code enforcement. The occupants continued to have trash piled on their property and more calls were made to code enforcement. After numerous calls, it was clear they were not going to comply. This case was then handed over to county attorney Ben Morgan. After the trash issue had been taken as far as it could within code enforcement office, I started contacting any government office that would listen to see how this issue could be resolved. I have rarely received a call back. Every few weeks since Ben Morgan has been appointed this case, I have called to get an update. In the past year and a half, Ben has returned my calls three times. This past Thursday, Ben returned my call and said there isn't much that he can do. The way that it is set up, the property does not technically have an owner to hold accountable. The property is owned by Blue Mountain Trust, which is a business trust with two listed trustees, neither of which are able to be located. He then informed me he cannot present this case in front of a judge when the property is owned by no one. This is an unacceptable excuse. As you can imagine, this situation has taken a toll on my family. Financially, we have now spent hundreds of dollars on pest control that was not needed prior to two thousand and twenty two. Rats breed quickly and a small infestation can quickly grow to be dozens in a year or two. Rats carry a plethora of disease, including the plague. Every day that Ben Morgan delays this case, that court delays taking this case to court, the infestation grows. With cold weather quickly approaching, my family will be taking every precaution to protect ourselves and our property from the rats and disease. As a homeowner, I am left feeling helpless, and as a taxpayer, I feel my county government has abandoned me. I do have a few questions for commissioners. One, what message does this send to taxpayers who follow laws and abide by code? Two, with the fines owed to the county being higher than the property value, can the property not be seized or condemned? Lastly, would you please help me resolve this situation? I thank you for your time this afternoon, and I hope that we can work together to find a solution to this problem.
Ms. White, what was that address again?
Thirty thirty three Rainbow Loop, Ashboro, North Carolina. And the trust is a business trust under Blue Mountain Trust.
All right.
Thank you. Nice to see you, Ben. Y'all have a great afternoon.
Isaac Hoffman.
Afternoon, everybody. Hope you're doing well.
Pulling me uh microphone up.
Oh.
Yeah, people listen at home and they can't hear.
There we go.
That's all right. You're not the first.
Okay. I can't. How can the residents of Fuller Mill Road North yet a fair impartial hearing in Randolph County with our officials about the Triad acting shooters gun club range? It was in two thousand and one when TASK made earth berms on the property, an organization called the Fuller Mill Road North Committee to find out and answer how an outdoor gun range could be started in an area zoned RA without any notifications to its neighbors. Our committee held a meeting and had our area county commissioner, Mr. Fry, attend. Mr. Fry then set up a meeting with TASK. That's the name of the uh gun club. Uh and attempts were made to come up with a joint list of compromises. This was impossible if there were too many differences existed. For the next fifteen years, nothing was done and the range noise grew. At least it was an outdoor gun range without shelters, so we got some peace and quiet during inclement weather. Then in two thousand and fifteen, TASK built shelters to get out of the weather and it's been World War Three every since. After a few years of this conscious nuisance of gun noise, I needed a place of peace and quiet. Uh but I was told by two realtors that I could not sell my property without a major loss because of the gun range. That was when I applied for a property tax decrease in the county and they agreed. Many neighbors have also had their taxes lowered due to the economic depletion due to the gun range noise. This is when the county took notice uh that they were losing money. In January twenty twenty, the county had a public hearing to decide if TASK was a nonprofit or a business. This is when their this was their claim to why they were allowed to operate the gun range. However, no, nine ninety N was filed from twenty fourteen to twenty nineteen, making them a for-profit organization under county tax law. However, the board decided that TASK was a nonprofit and let them continue to grow and use the gun range. The day after the meeting, I spoke with the planning director and he stated that the board's decision was final and we could not appeal. Years later, a lawyer informed me that in fact we had a thirty day window to appeal. I asked residents to oppose who opposed the gun range to contact our governor, senator, and congressman to implore them to get involved, but we were all told the same thing. You need to get in touch with your county commissioners. Is there anyone that can and will help the residents in our area with this injustice that is being committed against us? All we want is a fair, open, impartial hearing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
Amy Wang.
Good evening, commissioners. The increasing noise from the TASK gun range is degrading the quality of life for more than a hundred residents who live near the range. It is a non-conforming use on property that is designated as RA and the planning and zoning board is not, in my opinion, doing their job. The gun range came into existence through the use of a loophole in the old UDO. The Randolph County Planning and Zoning Board has done nothing to restrict or limit the operation or size of the gun range. In fact, the zoning board gives the appearance of supporting and protecting the gun range. Jay Dale has stated that it was never the board's intention to allow gun range to operate under the not-for-profit club use on land zoned as RA. In order to close this loophole, the board did make changes to the UDO, which specify that gun ranges can only be located and on properties zoned HI. And yet, the planning and zoning board has done nothing to bring the use of this property on Fuller Mill Road into compliance. I've had a meeting with Tanya Cattle. She said to me that since the club is not-for-profit, that the zoning board has no control over the use of the gun range. This suggests to me that any RA-zoned property owner can do whatever they like, regardless of any UDO restrictions, by forming a not-for-profit organization. It could be a dirt racetrack, more gun ranges, a drunk yard, a zoo. I believe that is not what the planning and zoning board intended. I was also told by Tanya Cattle that our only option would be to hire a lawyer and sue the range for being a nuisance. Why are we being asked to pay a third party to do the zoning board's job? The planning and zoning board exists to guide development and land use in the county for the benefit and well-being of all of its county residents, unhindered by rules and regulations or apparently any consideration for the residents who live around the gun range. The club allows uses of the gun range seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, by a club membership that is growing every year. I estimate the current membership to be around six hundred families, based on the club's twenty twenty-two filings and the current membership fee. This has created a daily and often constant noise problem for the local residents. The club allows all manner of firearms to be used at the range with little to no oversight by the club. Property value deductions cause the county to lose almost half a million dollars in taxable value. So I ask, why is the planning and zoning board allowing one property owner who doesn't even live anywhere near the gun range to use their property in a manner that violates the UDO restrictions for RA-zoned land that reduces the quality of life of all of the residents who do live near the gun range and reduces property values? Why do the rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness of the local residents take second place to this one property owner? You might ask, well, what about the property owner's rights? The fact is, the planning and zoning board and the UDO already limit what any of us can do with our land. Why is the zoning board making this one exception? I urge you, the commissioners, to look into this issue as soon as possible and hopefully agree that the use of this gun range has grown well past the legal or appropriate limit. We would like you, the commissioners, to instruct the planning and zoning board to have an open hearing about whether or not this gun range should be permitted to continue operating on this property. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Pam Thayer.
Hello. My name is Pam Thayer. I live at um fifteen seventy Fuller Mill Road North. And I come to you uh just sharing you what it's actually like to live on our road and to hear what sounds like a war going on with um it sounds like semi-automatic uh weapons. These aren't hunting rifles. These are semi-automatic weapons and uh it sounds like bombs and cannons and it's just, I've lived here for forty years and all I can tell you is it's gotten worse and worse and worse. And there seems to be no limit on what time of day they they choose to do this. It can be on a Sunday. It can be uh just seems to be no limitations. My main concern is for the environment. It's for the all the animals and for uh the Little Yari River and the lead and the the different things that it's got to be running into that with these um they've shot into these berms for how many years now. Uh it's gotta be going into the water. It's just not good. And if anything, you know, I I don't like to come somewhere with just a a complaint. I would offer it as a suggestion of a solution. If the main issue here is people want to get together and they want to improve their target practice, you know, why not take their funds and build some sort of enclosed facility so they could do their uh a target class practice inside and uh the noise would be buffered and not bother everybody? Other than that, I'm I'm not sure what to say other than it's not good and we'd like to change it.
Thank you, Thayer.
Ed Lights.
Maybe this maybe this will work. Um and and the name is Lees.
Sorry.
Well, it's one of those funny German names, you know what I'm saying? So um the last time I was here before the board, speaking to the board, there was a housing development that was trying to be developed on the other side of the Little Yari River. And the community came together and said, no, we don't want a subdivision in a farm residential area because we all chose to live in a farm residential area. I came from South Alabama up here for a job transfer and I've been here for thirty years and I absolutely love it. It's great. I mean, you know, my grandson came over yesterday and we were looking at deer in the front yard and, you know, I mean, you know, my wife and I, we go down to the uh to the peninsula and we we enjoy watching the river and oh, it's beautiful. It's absolutely the best place in the world to live until until the gun range came along. And the gun range um I you know uh I can can I ask? Can everyone who's here for the gun range, can you please raise your hand if you're here for the, oh my goodness. There's a lot of disgruntled people out there, you know? So that's why I'm here today, to talk to you about the gun range and what it's like. I mean, Easter Sunday, I get up and I go out and sit on my front porch and I'm just listening to the hawks cry and it's just beautiful out there and the next thing I know, it's bang, bang. And multiple ti- and and as the other people have already testified in front of you that this is this is, these are, you know, I think they're automatic weapons. Somebody said that they were actually using exploding, you know, ordinances. There's no caliber regulations or anything. I mean, it's it's pretty it's pretty much war on. So my my point is this. Why why is this going on so many year after year after year? Why is this going on? What we what I would like to do is I would like to see the community and the gun range sit down and say, okay, what are your rules and regulations? And then maybe we as a community could marshal them because if there are rules and nobody polices the rules.
Mr. Lees, you have fifteen seconds.
There are no rules. There are no rules. So why don't we get together with them and negotiate when they can fire and when they can't? Because other gun ranges do exactly the same thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Kevin Franklin.
Who's that Dana?
Evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. On behalf of the Randolph County EDC, I'm here just to advocate for an item that is on your consent agenda this evening. And that is the Industry Appreciation Month proclamation. Manufacturing, along with related warehousing and distribution operations, have really long been a hallmark of our community and our local economy and and supporting our industry is an essential part of the work that we do at the EDC. Established industrial companies, as you well know, create the majority of new jobs in any given year. They're the largest taxpayers in the county. They help to improve the quality of life for all citizens of Randolph County. Nationally, Manufacturing Day is celebrated annually on the first Friday of October. And rather than focusing on a single day, we here in Randolph County have chosen to celebrate, well, every day, but really to proclaim an entire month as Industry Appreciation Month. We didn't want to just focus even on manufacturing. We wanted to include warehousing, distribution, and other related industry to manufacturing. We have a very rich industrial heritage. We think it's important to publicly recognize the positive impact that our local industry has had on our community and continues to have on our community. Now, these companies, again, create jobs, they support families, they reinvest in their facilities, they give back to the community, they serve on community boards, they make Randolph County a better place, and that, I think, is something worth celebrating. Now, this is the fourth year that we've promoted Industry Appreciation Month, and each year, the county commissioners have kicked off the celebration by proclaiming October to be Industry Appreciation Month here in Randolph County. We are grateful for the county's recognition of the importance of industry in our community. And as I mentioned, at the EDC, we'll be celebrating industry all month long. Here in October, we'll have industry tours, the annual forklift rodeo, a luncheon recognizing our local industry. We'll have industry tours, the annual forklift rodeo, a luncheon recognizing our local industry that are celebrating a milestone anniversary of doing business in our community, and really from small local operations to the global giants like Toyota, the future of industry has never been better here in Randolph County, and we think that's something to celebrate, and we appreciate your support for that this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Is any other speakers? One more?
John Mottsinger.
My name's John Mottsinger. I live on Old Post Office Road. My neighbors, they live closer to the gun range than I do. I'm not used to speaking in public, so bear with me. I just want to add something. I work a third shift, so when I try to sleep during the day, I can't sleep. So, I wake up during the day and it causes a little mental stress, because, sorry, I'm nervous.
You're fine.
You're good.
But, so, we have to run fans and things like that to make white noise, so we don't hear the gun range. And we try to sit out on our porch and enjoy a conversation, you know, no television or anything like that, and then pow, pow, constant. And I understand you've got like, you know, those people are coming to the gun range to exercise their gun rights. I understand that, but they're going away and we're still there listening to it. And so, I just tolerate it, you know? Try to keep to myself or not to be unsociable, but I try to mind my own business and, you know, not bother other people. And so, one of our neighbors got their mailbox chained to and drug off, and so, kind of have that fear of retaliation. So, that's why I'm here today, because I'm not going to be afraid of that retaliation. And I guess that's all I got to say. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight.
May I ask one question?
Sure.
Do any of you happen to know, Ms. Wayne mentioned that there were membership fees for this gun range?
Yes.
Hundred and fifty dollars per year.
I'm sorry?
It's a hundred and fifty dollars per year for a family membership.
For a family membership?
And they were also allowed to bring guests, up to two at a time.
I went out there with Freddie Rutledge 23 years ago.
It's a long time ago.
That it? All right. Thank all of you who spoke tonight. We have made the notation of comments that were made, and we will follow up on those. Thank you all again. We now have our consent agenda, and as Mr. Franklin mentioned, the Industry Appreciation Month, which is a part of our consent agenda, I thought I might just read the proclamation that the county commissioners are adopting tonight relative to the consent agenda, and then it will, it will be included in that motion. Whereas the county of Randolph is pleased to have a thriving community of industries to support the local economy, and whereas these industrial companies provide essential employment opportunities for the citizens of the county of Randolph, and whereas these industrial companies provide local revenues from which the entire citizenry benefits, and whereas industrial businesses make considerable contributions to our families and communities, often improving the overall quality of life, and whereas we recognize and appreciate these industrial businesses. Now therefore, we, the Board of Commissioners of Randolph County, do hereby recognize our existing industrial businesses and by virtue of this proclamation, give notice to our citizens that the month of October 2024 is Industry Appreciation Month in the county of Randolph. That will be adopted this seventh day of October 2024. That's part of our consent agenda. Is there any other item on the consent agenda that you would like to have out separately?
I would just like to mention separately, C, the Resolution for Operation Green Light. This is something we started doing a couple of years, asking people to burn a green light in their home in honor of veterans and their families for the week of Memorial Day, and I don't have that date, Veterans Day, sorry. I don't have that date in front of me because my laptop is dead.
It is November 11th, somewhere around that date.
It's for the week.
November 4th through the 11th.
Okay, so November 4th through the 11th. So, if you would like to burn a green light in an outdoor light or, you know, in a lamp or something that can be seen from the road, encourage your neighbors to do the same. Tell them why. We will be burning green lights on our government buildings, and some of our municipalities will be doing the same, so. And thank you.
And you will, the old county courthouse downtown, you will see lighted in green lights during that week, so very impressive. Any other comments? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as discussed?
So may.
I have a second.
Say.
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye oppose no, and the consent agenda is approved. Our first item of new business this afternoon is consideration, pardon me, consideration of the purchase of land for a new Liberty Elementary School. Dr. Ganey is here. Dale? Yes.
Appreciate you letting me speak tonight. Want to start by just saying I'm here tonight because of some great work by the members of our Board of Education. They have worked very hard on this piece of property, and as has Dale Brinkley, Executive Director for Operations, who's with me tonight. So, I bring you tonight the purchase and pay, sale agreement, or purchase and sale agreement for a piece of property in Liberty, as we look for a new site for the new Liberty Elementary School, which is phase, part of Phase One of our growth plan. The board and myself and Dale Brinkley believe this is the best site for the new school, and it has, for 32 acres, we can purchase up to 40 as we need if things happen with the feasibility and environmental study and dictate that we need to purchase more. But I bring that to you. I'll answer any questions you have about this property.
Just reading, I can't say I read it word for word, but I read a lot of it, but you've got some options right up, what, 180 days?
Yes.
If there are issues with the, with the site that we're just not aware of or...
We have 180 days, and then we can extend it 90 days if need be. But 180 days to check out the site, make sure the sites, there's no surprises, so we will get on that. If, if, if this is something the Board of Commissioners can support, we will start on that and move forward.
Do you have a timeline close by, close?
No, we're going to check it out, make sure it's right.
I mean...
Well, we'd hope to have this site developed and, and the building built somewhere in spring of '27, so we could open '27, '28 school year.
Good. Other questions?
Could you make just a quick comment? It says, you know, it talks about the acreage here.
Mm-hmm.
So, you have a lower number and a higher number. Could you comment about that?
Just as the feasibility study may ask, may require us to buy more, and so we've been given leeway that if we need up to 40 acres, we could do that.
Okay.
We're going in after 32, as Will knows. We're going to go, we hope 32 will solve it, but when the feasibility and environmental studies, if it says we need to, if it extends to some of the buildable land, then we might have to build, buy another acre or two.
Sure.
And Department of Public Instruction has agreed on, on that number of acres also?
Yes. We have 22.4 buildable acres on this piece of land.
Right. All right. Other questions? All right.
Oh, wait a minute. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I had a, I had a citizen to ask me today, and so I'll just ask this question so that I can give them an answer for that. I feel like it's, you know, a yes, but it, it was, has, you know, has the land been vetted? Have they walked over it to be sure that it's, that the lay of the land is suitable, that the roads around it are good, and...
Well, that's what we'll be doing in the next 180 days, to make sure there's no surprises.
Okay.
Right now, we have a realtor who's worked with us, but the next 180 days will be to eliminate any surprises. We don't want to start, we don't, you know, we can pull back after, in the next 180 days if we need to.
Okay. Excellent.
Yeah, I think...
And that's outlined in the contract or in the sale agreement.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty open property. It looks flat for the most part, but then when you get out there and start looking, it may be a little bit different, but, you know, also the road would be a concern at this point.
Yeah.
So, I'm sure that'll be part of the process going through.
Yeah.
Just the access to the, to the site.
Any other questions? Comments?
Chair, if you're ready for a motion.
We're ready for a motion. Let's...
Let me find it here. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the purchase and sale agreement for the property at 47, 45, 47 Starmount Road in Liberty at the request of Randolph County Board of Education for a new Liberty Elementary School is presented.
I have a second to that motion.
Second.
Further discussion of the motion? Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I guess one thing is, we're the funders of this. It's up to the school board.
Yeah.
It is their decision where and how to put this together, so we're, we're, we're not, but building the school. You're building the school.
We're building the school.
I just want to make sure that people understand it's not the commissioners, it's the school board.
Once we get the land clear with the next 180 days, then we'll be doing design work and bid work, and then there we'll go.
All right. Other comments? All right, ready to vote. Those in favor of the motion to approve the purchase, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, and it is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you for your due diligence here, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to follow some of what goes along with this with our capital improvement plan. Mr. Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. There's two action items that we'll be requesting that goes along with that land purchase. One is a budget amendment and the county schools capital project, and the other would be what we would propose as a transfer, transfer temporarily from the capital reserve to fund that. So, both those together, and then the other action item would be what IRS requires, if we intend to repay ourselves with loan proceeds later on for the purchase of this land, then we have to have a reimbursement resolution that's prepared and submitted for you as well, too. So, the budget amendments that go along with purchasing that property and then the reimbursement resolution for the IRS.
And I suspect we're going to see more similar to this at another site probably before long.
Reimbursement resolution covers another project that we've discussed, but the budget amendment for the other land purchase will be coming.
All right. Questions of Will? All right. Much pleasure, the board.
Mr. Chairman, I got us into the last one, so I guess we need to finish up the paperwork on this one. So, I make a motion to approve, one, approve the recommended capital project amendments, and two, to adopt the resolution of the Board of Commissioners for the county of Randolph declaring its intention to reimburse said county from proceeds of one or more tax-exempt financings for certain capital expenditures.
Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, and it's approved. Thank you, Will. Okay, next item is restricted funds for Axon body cameras. Chief Deputy Andre Asleton.
Good evening. Thank you very much for your time. The Sheriff's Office is seeking to utilize $2,533 in law enforcement restricted, restricted funds to purchase three additional body cameras. The use of the body cameras has become a central tool in modern law enforcement, providing accountability, transparency, and evidence collection, and these cameras, we will help protect both our officers and the citizens they serve by documenting interactions and improving the overall safety. Approve the, approve the expenditure for restricted law enforcement funds for the item listed above. Approve the following budget amendment to the general fund in the amount of $2,533 coming from asset forfeiture. We currently have a balance in our asset forfeiture of $436,085.75.
You knew I was going to ask that.
I'm learning after six years.
It's been growing a little bit since the last time.
Yes. We have plans.
You always do.
We have plans.
All right. Questions from the board? They have a motion to approve, motion on the, on the agenda item. Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussions? Those in favor of the motion to approve, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed no, and it's approved. Okay. Animal Control Services for the town of Liberty and Jonathan Moody was to be here, as I mentioned earlier tonight. He is up in western North Carolina, providing a most valuable service, and so I think Zeb is going to handle the duties.
Yeah, thank you. Actually, Jonathan's still in the mountains, as you say, and serving the folks in western part of the state in a great way, and so I will step in and help him out with this item. For a number of years, he's been working with the folks in Liberty for the possibility of handling animal services calls. They're at a point where they're ready to proceed. The contract that's proposed would run November 1st through July 1 and thereby starting annual renewals based, the cost based on population. The prorated cost for the first year is just over $7,600. It's projected that going forward, it'll be a $10,000 to $11,000 per year item, but again, it's dependent on population growth within Liberty. That number will increase per resident, and at this point, we are ready to move forward. Mr. Moody's expressed no concern about availability of animal control officers to be able to service the area with the current staff that he has, and we're looking for your approval to move forward with that contract.
I don't see anybody here tonight from Liberty. All right. Just as Zeb mentioned, the $7,640 is through June of next year, and then we'll have a full calendar or budget year, effectively July 1. So, that's the recommendation. Any discussion or questions? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I, I move to approve the contract to town of Liberty and Randolph Animal Serv, Randolph County Animal Services is presented.
Have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion on the motion? Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, and it's unanimously approved. Next is a report on the strategic plan adopted by Animal Control, and Leah is going to step in tonight and help on that process.
Yes, absolutely. So, as was mentioned previously, standing in for Jonathan Moody this evening, I was approached about doing some neutral facilitation as a third party for the animal services board, so we took them through a SWAT analysis, a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats analysis. From there, they had two working sessions, identified goals and priorities from that SWAT analysis, and then we worked on putting all of those goals and directions into an action plan, which is what you'll see on the screen. It's the first page of that action plan. There are four priorities that you'll see at the top underneath that heading are to improve sustainability of Randolph County Animal Services, promote responsible pet ownership through community outreach, enhance pet adoption, and improve shelter functionality. So, a majority, or actually unanimously, they went ahead and adopted this particular strategic plan. It spans three years with basic functions such as outreach, education with different kinds of animal owners, including some evaluation of grants... including some evaluation of grants that might be available to the team. But because these, the strategic plan does hold staff to additional duties, potentially outside of their current scope of work, included, including their director, the board would like to adapt, to ask the Board of Commissioners to consider the adoption of the strategic plan for the Animal Services Board.
I noticed that there were several mentions here about a mentor, mentors.
Yes.
Is that yet, who are they? I mean, where do we?
Um, so since Jonathan moved up from the working position into his, into his role as director, he wanted to go ahead and form a mentor mentee relationship with a, with another director in this community, a sister county, in order to gain some skills and supervisory skills from that, increase his own capacity and then his staff's capacity. He has been working with Guilford County's Animal Services Director, but he's looking to gain those relationships with others as well, potentially looking at some, you know, some conventions or conferences in this particular field, but really finding someone with, for one-on-one support. And I know that Guilford got a grant that has been guiding that mentor relationship, but finding a way to, to, to move that forward once the grant is gone.
I think, as I serve on that board, I think there was some, not concern, but it's brought to the board that there was a need for additional training for not only the director but also staff to get them trained up because there has been some, some turnover there. And it also gives them a little bit of a career path in their duties as they go forward. So that was one of the things that we talked a significant deal about, about the mentorships and, and additional trainings that could be offered. And that can be used as a recruiting tool as well.
Absolutely. And that does fit in with the rest of the countywide HR surveys about what recruitment and retention areas people were interested in, in development, professional development and mentorship was on the top of that list.
I, I thought in just reading it, there was a lot of focus on training and...
Yes.
Be better prepared. Also, on the revenue side, fees and some grants. Do we know where some grants might be available or we're going looking?
We're going looking. There are a lot of foundation and private sector grants in this area. PetSmart Foundation, Petco Foundation, and the like. You'll see on the consent, or y'all saw the consent agenda already that there was an SPCA grant. They tend to be small, but there are other avenues in the grant world. And there are partnerships with nonprofits who can expand the Animal Services Board's eligibility in the grant world since local governments are not always eligible for certain kinds of grants. So that was something that the board came together to talk about, too, because they understand that in their nonprofit world, they have different kinds of eligibility for different grants.
Other questions of Leah?
I just like to thank the board, the Animal Services Board for their work, extra work that they did. Zeb Holden came in and helped us out, sent in on those meetings. And so I appreciate Leah, you coming and facilitating things. I think you and Jennifer Layton were key in pulling a lot of this together along with Jonathan. So appreciate the extra work that y'all put in to pull this together. I think the advisory board is, is very excited about it and have some, some direction for the next three years. And it does, as you see, wholesome folks accountable for those objectives. And the board's looking for that accountability as well. So we're looking forward to it. So thank you.
Thank you. It's a pleasure.
All right. The action item or motion for our board is to approve the strategic plan. So any other questions or entertain a motion on this matter?
Ms. Chairman, since I serve on that board and at the request of the board, I move that we approve the Randolph County Animal Services Strategic Plan for twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-seven.
Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, and it's adopted. Good work. Thank you. Okay, our next item is opioid use disorder capacity assessment. And Jennifer Layton called in sick this afternoon unexpectedly. So we're going to have a tag team, I believe. And Rebecca's going to be involved and Tara, our health director. And I think Leah's on standby, so.
Yes, she is. Jennifer has not felt well all day and she was green at about five fifteen. So if I read, that's why.
You got it.
But we're hoping that she feels better. I think she came to work today to, to come to this, but. I do want to take a quick minute and reintroduce Rebecca Carlson. Rebecca joined our team in August a year ago. She does nothing but opioid settlement-related activities. She works really closely with the entities that have received opioid settlement monies. She's involved with her technical assistants. She is one of their primary contacts, so we're thrilled to have Rebecca. So this evening, we're here to share with you all an opioid use disorder capacity assessment that we have planned. I apologize for reading, but I am not the subject matter expert on this. This is Rebecca, Jennifer, and Leah. But our, our department does plan to contract with JG Research and Evaluation to conduct an opioid use disorder system of care assessment for the county. This assessment is guided by four goals. Number one, identify current capacity of providers and pharmacies in the county that offer treatment for opioid and substance use disorder and the number of patients that they can serve. Number two, identify and explore gaps in service delivery systems and suggest recommendations to improve them. Number three, examine existing opioid substance use disorder services and identify any barriers that prevent people from getting care. Number four, create a map of the county's opioid use disorder treatment system. JG Research and Evaluation will use county-level information as well as information from questionnaires and focus groups to conduct this assessment. Randolph County Public Health staff will prepare an inventory of what's already existing in the community as far as services go for the assessment. Once the assessment is completed, JG Research and Evaluation will complete a report. Information included in the report will demonstrate where we are locally regarding opioid use disorder treatment. Report contents may also be of benefit for future planning and decision-making purposes regarding use of local opioid settlement funds for supporting evidence-based strategies outlined in the opioid settlement memorandum of agreement. The project cost will be fifty-three thousand, five hundred dollars with an anticipated completion date of June twenty-twenty-five. Designated opioid settlement funds will be used to fund this project. Comments or questions?
Only question I had in reading, how did we pick JG Research? I mean, was there, were there other choices or we already knew something about these folks?
Yeah, the CAS tool was one that was identified in a report that the Health and Human Services, so the US, the Health and Human Services, put out on conducting a substance use treatment capacity assessment. This was one of the tools that came up as an objective tool for looking at an assessment and one of the better tools available.
Very good. Do we know if any other counties are using them?
It's been used in several other states and other counties. I'm not aware of it being used in North Carolina, but they do have team members who are based in North Carolina.
Missoula County in Montana. Twenty-twenty-one. They found there were gaps and needs across the continuum of care. They found, just on a side note, one of the things they found that they did not expect was, quote, "the outsized role of alcohol use." And the demand it, it put on their EMS, emergency departments, and criminal justice. So I'd like to be able to talk to, you know, some of ours to see, you know, what role alcohol, alcohol use plays in, you know, in the cause that they take. But they found there that there was unusually large number. They found that they needed prevention and health education programming. Gaps were in detox services, partial day treatment, and hospital care, certified peer support specialists, and that there were significant demands in their treatment system. Housing supports and affordable housing, which is no surprise to anybody. And that, of course, the alcohol and the drug, drug use were big contributors to crimes. So, and then there were, I mean, that's a study that I, I can forward to somebody that would like to see it, but I found it to be very interesting. And it did give specific information, which, which I personally like. It helps you to target, you know, what the needs are and where, you know, where to put those funds. And it also helps with community nonprofits that want to help. Helps them to see where the greatest needs are, so.
Very good. Other questions? The board will note, this does not require any official action on our part.
I got a quick question.
Yeah, go right ahead.
About the no action part, we, we don't have to approve the disbursement of this fifty-three?
No, it's, it's with opioid funds that Tara mentioned, it comes under the Health Department.
Will may better answer this question. I think there's opioid settlement funds that have been set aside and that's part of the allotment that has been set aside for this.
Does that suit up with the choice that we made having those funds?
Yes. Yes.
So there's, there's a pool of money of the opioid funds that we've set aside for the Health Department to use at their discretion?
Strategic planning purposes, including salaries and anything else related to strategic planning.
Other questions, comments? All right. Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Keep us advised. Okay. Next item is approve our commissioner meeting schedule for next year. I just would note, the March meeting has been moved up by one week. That first Monday is the NACO Legislative Conference in Washington. I don't know why they, this year it was around the middle of February and it didn't affect any of our meetings. It, it has happened in the past where it did, but that's a... March is another one of those months when it'll be, still be five weeks before we get to the April Commissioners Meeting because, see like today, we're meeting on the very last day that it can be the first Monday. So that same thing happens between March and April of next year. So we need a motion to approve the annual meeting schedule. The other change has to do with New Year's and Labor Day, as always. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Other discussion? Any other issue, dates that are an issue? Any none? Those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, and it's approved. Next item is to set the meeting with the Randolph County Board of Education, as we usually do, at January the thirteenth, four-thirty in the afternoon. So we have a motion to accept that invitation and put it on our docket.
So moved since that's Dr. Ganey's favorite day of the year. Is that still your favorite day of the year?
Yeah. Have a second.
Second.
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, and it's approved. All right, our county managers update?
There, I had a couple of comments, Mr. Chairman, but you kind of stole them at the beginning of the meeting. So I'm going to rehash them because it'll be good for everybody to hear that we have a lot of caring hearts. We've got a lot of folks within our organization who are spending time up in the west, western part of the state, helping in any way possible and, and providing services. Right now, it's more emergency services, rescue services, incident management. That need is going to evolve. They're going to need folks from planning, folks from tax. They're going to need assistance for a long time and we're glad to be able to assist as much as we can. And lastly, we will be in the historic courthouse next month. We have been here for months and months and months saying that that's going to happen. We will be in the historic courthouse next month.
You heard it, right here. Very good. Commissioners updates, I just have one. I think I mentioned maybe a couple of months ago, the council of government, regional council, applied for a grant to help with housing assistance, planning, also actual construction, renovation, weatherization. We had our executive board meeting last Wednesday and the council was awarded the grant. It's a little over two million dollars a year for about, I think, three years initially. That will involve Randolph, Davidson, Alamance, Rockingham, and Caswell Counties. The city of Burlington is sort of the, the head of that. I don't, I don't know exactly how that came about structurally. Randolph County will get two seats on that board. We will be contacted by somebody for our two, it can be two commissioners, Leah Commissioner and somebody from one of our departments. But we will have two seats on that board. And that will probably happen before the end of this year because the funds will come available right after the first of the year.
For how many years, did you say?
I think it's for three years. It's renewable. And it's a little over about two point two million dollars. Like I said, they can actually send a crew in to make repairs. So, and we have board, we have board seats. So I guess there's a priority along the way with these, with our co-county members. Just make you aware of that. If anybody wants to volunteer to serve on that board. All right, any other commissioner comments tonight? All right. Thank all of you for being here. Appreciate your attention. We're getting out reasonably early tonight and do have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And we are opposed. Be careful and thank all of you.